Call the meeting to order all rise.
I plead.
Let me just replay the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approved of the agenda, is there any changes to the agenda? Council? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Sheldon, seconded by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You can't hold yourself.
I can't, no. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved of the minutes, the September 7th meeting. You all received them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification needed? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 7th meeting?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Sheldon. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor.
I'll abstain.
Okay, four in favor, none against, one abstention. This brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings, we will move on to reports and presentations. Police Department monthly report, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Activity report for August 2022, some of the numbers we had. We did 27 door checks, we had 216 traffic stops, we did 74 foot patrol, we had eight gas no pays, seven accidents we had, 19 medicals, 25 assists for people, we had 15 behavioral health calls, seven harassment calls, 10 alarms, eight welfare checks, 12 suspicious activity calls, five unwanted person calls, five juvenile problem calls, six verbal disputes, we had 31 assists for other agencies, nine suspicious vehicle calls, and we did seven canine assists. And we had, gave citations for no Minnesota driver's license, we had eight of those. We had a total of 754 ICRs for the month. And then of course on August 2nd, we had Night to Unite, and I think that went over really well this year, everything went well, had a lot of good feedback on it, so I think it went well. It's always nice to have the public come, and it was pretty hot that day, so probably the little numbers were down a little bit, so, but I think it went over pretty well. So it's always nice to do that and kind of finish out the summer with that, so, works good.
Food was outstanding too. Chief, the food was outstanding too.
The what?
The food.
Yeah, those firemen doing a nice job.
Oh boy, they do a great job, absolutely.
Yeah, it was really, we appreciate Coburns for their donations to that and all of the other donations that are, to make that day go over well, so the fire department donated, and Coburns, and the bank, so it's nice.
Anybody have any questions?
I just had one question, it's pretty relevant for today. I don't know if you can speak anymore to what happened, or if with the school prank, phone call prank.
Yeah, to the school, I don't have much feedback on that, I, or I should, much information from what we got, the call came into our own dispatch to our department, and right away, the way the call came in, you pretty much know it was bogus, because first of all, an event like that would not come in that manner, the way it came, and just without giving details, it was pretty, you know, just, you could tell it was a hoax right away, yeah. But in saying that, we responded right away to the school, I had troopers there before I even got there, and I was already on the phone with the superintendent, and everything was being kosher, and the word was out right away to the school, so. And then as that was happening, I was already hearing on the radio, other schools where St. Cal Paulo and a bunch of other ones were getting the same thing, so correlation between all the other schools, you know, just made sense that it was a, so, yeah, so, but, you know, the same effect, it's a serious situation, and you can't take it lightly, and you have to make sure you have the response ready to deal with it, so, I think we did well, though. Let me know if you hear any feedback from the public, if you hear something, would you sure, love to help or change something, or, I think the school did a notification, and...
Yep.
Yeah, so.
I've got a question, not about the same thing, the speed signs, those seem to be working well?
Yes, I think they're working really well, actually, yeah, you're seeing a lot of people dynamiting the brakes, I've been behind cars that are dynamiting the brakes, yeah, they're speed, speed down, so, yeah, I think they're really working well, and I think the public has, opens them up, you get so, in a small town, you get in a routine where you're heading down the road, you just keep cruising, I think it at least wakes you up and says, oh yeah, I guess, I have to slow down, so.
With that, on the ones on Ash Street, as you're going north, it says school, 20 miles an hour, is that year round?
During school.
During school?
Yeah.
Okay, because I know I had one person get a ticket for going over 20 miles an hour, and they thought it was during school hours, and it wasn't, and they got a ticket, and they were like, when does it do, and I says, if it says 20, it's 20. So if you're going over 20 on Ash Street, whether that sign's up or not, you're gonna get it, so.
Yeah, and then we, it's nice, because we can move that sign around, it's, you know, if you noticed here in Stearns County Fair, in our Sinclair those days, we moved it to 12th Street, 186 coming into town, to slow the volume of traffic down there, so, and now to Ash Street during the school time, so it's nice to be able to move that around, I think they work really well, so, and I think the one on Sinclair Louis coming into town is...
That one's done the most, I think.
And you'd be really surprised, the speeds that, because we can, Ben finds the digital speeds on them, right Ben?
Yeah, we've downloaded all the speeds in time.
Yeah, and there's some incredible speeds that are coming down with that, I think we've had it within 70.
Oh my god.
Yeah, so.
I know Sergeant Joe Jensen has told me that when I was on Beltline by Fleet Supply, there was a lot of 70 mile an hour people going past Fleet Supply and that, so.
Yeah.
Need to put a license plate reader on that chief, then we mail him a ticket.
Well, don't be surprised, and I will have our officer sit by those speed signs too, and, you know, he'll write some, issue some citations too along with it, so.
Okay. I had one other question, Brian, in the report, every month we see assists to other agencies, I'm sure that they're coming and assisting us back as well, is that something that gets reflected in the report as well?
Not for us, actually.
I just didn't know, to be able to see how often people are coming in and...
Yeah, that's a good question, yeah, no, I don't think there's a...
Because I think that's a good, good that everyone can work together, I just, it'd be interesting to...
I would say for us, probably the State Patrol would be the, at the top for assisting us, and then Melrose, I mean, those two right beside each other, because troopers are usually pretty close too, so for backup, it's...
Well, it's nice to see that, being able to work together, so, thank you for that.
Yeah, it works really well, we have a good working relationship with all of them.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
6B Public Works Department, Ben?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, over the past month, we did install the new boat landing planks with the assistance of the DNR, that's now about 20 feet longer into the water than it was previously, the last piece is a large 5 foot by 12 foot plank, which will help prevent the large holes from forming behind the boats when people are loading them on their trailer, so that turned out well and good. Splash pad has been shut down for the season, this is going to be winterized the first week of October, planted three new trees, one is in Conservation Park, two in the Dog Park. We also sent out tree notices to property owners who have dead trees that need to be removed. We performed the replacement of the radiator on the City Hall generator, and we also did the annual maintenance, so this is back in operation, we were just getting a lot of delays from Cummins to get that done from them, they actually pushed us off till spring, so then mid-August, we started forming a different plan to get that done ourselves, so at least we can rely on that to operate now again. We repaired a storm sewer line by McDonald's, repaired a drain tile that was hit during construction in the industrial park project, we hauled in our sand for the winter season, and the salt has arrived as well, so everything's in the storage shed, several boulevard trees were removed, and we are working on street signs for the 2nd Street construction project. Out at the airport, we prepped the building pad for the new AD building addition, they are hoping to get the forms up maybe this week to pour that pad out there, but if not this week, it'll be next week. They did remake the asphalt repair to the taxiway area in front of the FBO hangar at the airport, this was done with a micro-surface seal, they decided to do that versus the mill and overlay, so that's completed, it actually, it turned out pretty nice, and we do have a one-year warranty on that, so we'll assess that after a winter plowing and make sure that's holding up okay. At the arena, we had the last rental event for the year, we're starting to get everything set up for ICE to go in next month, and we washed the arena prior to the mural painting beginning, so if they're moving right along with that, with that mural up there, that's turning out nice, so, any questions I can answer for you?
Questions? One thing that I talked to you about this morning, or you had mentioned to me, is the signs are in for the parking ordinance for those winter months, those are in, so they'll be going up, and then notices will be going out in the paper or whatever, that that will be enforced, starting December 1, and personally, I've had a few people tell us that we won't enforce it, and they, they'll be laughing at us if that partway through, and I said, well, that remains to be seen, so, basically, our departments are on notice, if you're in a parking the street, you're gonna be gone, so. Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Planning Commission report, Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, in your packet, you have a copy of the agenda from the September 13th Planning Commission meeting, we did hold two public hearings, one was for zoning map amendment, which is an action item later on your agenda, we also had a public hearing for the Eagles Healing Nest property, for an interim use, commercial planned unit development to operate as a private recreational camping area, and that has been tabled till the next meeting. And we have a copy of the August building permit report, we issued 24 permits for construction value over just one, over 1.2 million dollars, a year ago, we issued 27 permits for a valuation of 13 million, but 12 million of that was for the Centricure nursing home addition and expansion. So any other questions for me?
Questions? Comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
City Engineer report, Keith?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, projects going well, I'll start with the South Industrial Park, South Industrial Park has mostly gravel on the roads at this point in time, concrete curb and gutter is scheduled to go in last half of next week, then they'll let that cure over the weekend, and start doing more gravel to top it off, and get prepared for pavement after that, so I would think, probably not the following week, but maybe early the next week will be paving for that area, so, then what's left out there essentially is, once it's done, to shape up the boulevards, and get seating done, the lift station still has kind of the guts of the lift station, and the control panels, all those things need to be done for that, to get that operational, but on track to get things done, I know we have a building out there that's projected to be up and operational by the end of October, and we should be able to accommodate that, so shouldn't be an issue, I think the lift station will probably be the biggest of, that needs to be done, and hopefully the control panel will come in for that, but that's probably about the thing I'd be worried about the most at this point in time, in terms of schedule, but the roads and everything should be, should be done and good. On the 2022 project, the, all of the curb and gutter should have been completed today, actually, on the entire project, so then that will sit over the weekend in curing out, and then next week, they'll be coming in and starting to put gravel in, and getting that all shaped up in Phase 2 and Phase 3, so they're ready to start paving, probably the week after next would be paving scheduled for that as well. They're gonna start, finally, gonna start restoration on Phase 1, I believe tomorrow they should be out there, they have been screening black dirt down south, and they'll be hauling it up here and starting to spread that, so that's taken much longer than I'd hoped to get that started, but that will be getting started, we understand, tomorrow, so, in fact, there was somebody out, starting to do some work, the last, today at least, and maybe the day before as well, so, that's kind of what's happening for the next couple weeks out there. I haven't seen none of the steps out front here, we do have a landscape architect putting together a draft, and I haven't got a chance to check around and see where he's at with that, so something we can look at and decide kind of where we want to go with that project. And we're working on the, that, the new Meyer property, the author's edition up there, and that's getting close to being able to be submitted for staff review first, and then to Planning Commission after that, but that'll probably be in October, maybe the first meeting in November thereabouts for that one, but that's, that's coming together fairly nicely as well, so I think that covers pretty much everything, is there any questions, anyone has for me?
I have one que, well, a couple questions, one regarding seating, are we getting too late in the year?
Well, it'll be dormant seating, so it means it won't be coming up this year, but it will come up in the springtime, and then if things don't come up as well as planned, they'll have to reseed and those kinds of things in the spring, so.
I, the only reason I question is I thought dormant seating was like kind of a deadline of September 15th, or right around there.
That's, that's, that's correct, normally, you actually don't seed there in the summer, and then you seed again starting the 15th, and you seed, you know, it kind of depends on the year, the weather, but by the time we get to seeding, it's likely going to be dormant seeding, I don't think it'll germinate and be coming up, unless we happen to have a really nice fall, and stays warm into early November potentially, but we would normally not expect it to probably to come up, so.
And is that for the 2022 project as well, or are we gonna wait until next year?
That would be on both, yeah, be on both, yeah. It's possible some will, you know, some of it will germinate and come out, it really depends, it's weather dependent, so it depends what happens here in the next, you know, next month.
The other question I had is that I've heard from a couple residents along the 2nd Street area that they've received a new assessment budget, and I, I guess I wasn't aware that there was a raise, or a difference in what we originally sent, and now, because they were told that it was a difference in pricing.
You mean from the original, the preliminary estimate versus...
Yeah, and I, I wasn't clear on when they received that, so, the timeframe.
And then assessments have gone out for the, you know, the final assessment hearing, they get preliminary back when we, before we approved the project, way back, and I'm not aware, I don't think...
So not that something came out recently?
Oh, we did send out a revision, so there was a revision that was sent out for some, so, and there was a few, there's been a few questions from folks, it just, some of it's been assessment methodology, most people know like what their front footage is of their property, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's what they get charged, it kind of depends on if they're on the curve, if they're on the corner lot, those kinds of things are different, so we've had a few questions on those kind of things.
Is our final budget still the same, or is this, I guess I'm just questioning, because I'm seeing, what I heard was, you know, neighbors talking to neighbors, that they're, they're seeing a difference of like 6 to 8 thousand dollars per property.
It seems like a lot, I haven't seen the, those final numbers, well, it seems like it shouldn't be going up that much, but I certainly will look into that and see if there's any, you know, anything to that or not, that it's gone up that much, but, you know, we've cut stuff out of the project, so, and the bids came in reasonable for, for what we originally estimated, so I would expect it to be that much, but I will look into it.
And that's why I ask, I was surprised to hear that.
Any other questions? One thing on the South Industrial Park, are they going to be done hauling all their black dirt screening out of there before that tar gets put down?
Before...
Before they tar out there in the industrial park?
No.
Because I really don't want to see that tar tore up, just because these guys aren't getting their job done.
Yeah, unfortunately, unfortunately, they're both our projects, it's not our fault collectively, it's the contractors, but they couldn't have, they couldn't have had about a worse timing for wanting to haul that out of there, because they are going to be going across the road, hopefully they won't have any issues with tearing up the road, but that's certainly a possibility, the two contractors have talked, so they've, you know, agreed upon what, you know, Kramer, who's hauling across, is gonna be responsible for anything that's, that's damaged, but we've got, you know, we've got concrete coming, and once that's in, we're not gonna hold up for them, so therefore, they may have to find another way around, so it's a bit of a, a bit of a problem, so, but it's not our problem, but it is sort of our problem, because we want both projects finished, but the timing is, is not ideal by any means, so, but we're not gonna, we're very well aware, we do not want them to tear up the road, whoever, if they do tear up the road, they will be fixing it and replacing it at their own dime, so.
And they're all under standing of that situation?
Yep, yep, they're very well aware of that, being aware of that, and then being aware of that after the fact, are sometimes two different things, but, but they are very well aware of that, so.
I was just wondering whether or not there shouldn't be something in writing that they both sign off on? Because I, I can see it all of a sudden turning into a problem.
It could be, I mean, we could, we could consider doing that, you know, the only problem with us is then we're sort of insert ourselves into the middle of it, whereas it really is between, if you will, two private parties at this point in time, if we get involved, then have we sort of taken on some of that risk by getting involved, but it's a good comment, and I think we should, you know, we'll definitely consider that, whether we should do that, and if you feel strongly that we should, we certainly will.
Well, I, you know, maybe we don't, but I think you should, as the engineer on both projects, maybe convey our concern, or that, if there's any question at all, that someone's not gonna take the responsibility to fix what gets damaged, then you want to at least see a copy of what they agreed between them in our hands.
Yeah, and I, I've already talked to them both about, you know, that this is their responsibility, and Northern Lions, from their perspective, it's, it's not their responsibility, their responsibility is to provide us a good product, if somebody else tears it up, somebody else is responsible for it, you know, they sort of get stuck in, in the middle as well, so, and they don't want that, and we don't want that for them either, I mean, we want the projects done, both of them done, so, so we have been looking at, you know, ways to, can we figure out how we can get them around out there, they might be able to get around the very west edge of Assembly Avenue and drive around, so I think, I think there are options to, to get them around, once they, you know, if they still are hauling, which they probably will be, at the time that we're looking at putting down, you know, putting the curb and gutter in, but I do believe they can get around that, that west end, but they'll have to do a little bit of, a little grading work in order to do that, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Airport Board?
Okay, the Airport Board met on September 15th, that was a regular meeting, as Ben said, the compass road, compass roads has been microsealed, it was gonna be mill and overlaid, but that changed to a microseal, and then we'll have to paint the new rows on it in 2023, the fueling system, we still have that contractor upgrade to finish, or to get going on, they did hear that the Council did approve moving forward with the AD building upgrades, that project has begun this fall already, with our crew working on the, on the grading for that, and then also, they discussed some issues with the hangar leasing, modifying some, modifying the inside of the hangar with a few things that he shouldn't probably be doing, so we may be doing an inspection of all the hangars, or at least having something included in the lease, if we do approve any modifications that they're included in there. Other than that, that's about it for the Airport Board.
Questions? We'll move on to action items, 7A, approved pay request number 5, 2022 project?
We have received the fifth pay application from C&amp;L Excavating for the 2022 project, this as you know, is the revised contract is 4.674 million dollars, so they have completed 2.6 to date as of the date of this receipt of this pay application, after we, after, excuse me, after the retainage of 5%, we have an amount due of 158,86280.
Okay, questions? Comments? Do I have a motion to approve the pay request number 5?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7B, approve appointment of EMT?
Ambulance Director Kathy Strooper recommends that Casey Klein be removed from probationary status and be advanced to the EMT B1 pay scale. Klein was initially a driver or EMR, she subsequently promoted to, he subsequently promoted to an EMT probationary on March 17th, and now is requested on September 17th to become a full-fledged EMT, so that's our request is to advance Casey Klein effective September 17th.
Do I have a motion to advance Casey Klein?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Sheldon, do I have a second? Seconded by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7C, approve staff, public work supervisor?
So, Public Works Supervisor Ben Plink has been with the city since October 1st of 2018, he is advancing according to the non-union pay scale, and is now eligible to advance to step 6, as a non-union employee, this advancement is subject to City Council approval, we're recommending that this approval be granted effective October 1, 22, so he will go to step 6 on that date.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve the advancement?
You'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Joe.
I just heard Sheldon first, so.
Don't matter.
We'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7D, approve ordinance 815, amending zoning map?
The Planning Commission, acting as the Board of Adjustment, conducted a public hearing at its meeting on September 13th to consider the rezoning of a parcel of land from R1 Residential to IC Residential, Industrial Commercial, the property is owned by Ron Mortson and is located at the corner of Beltline Road and 10th Street South, the property was zoned IC in the past, but was subsequently rezoned to R1, this action reverts it back to that original IC classification, and you do have a aerial view of it in your packet for your review, so I also have ordinance 815 in your packet, which is the ordinance amending the official zoning map to revert that property to IC, so that is our action request, it is to approve ordinance 815.
Questions? Concerns?
What, what is he wanting to do with the rezoning, is there something specific, or just...
For the IC, he's gonna be zoning, building a shop there for his business.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 815?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, Public Works Department vacancy?
So with the retirement of Public Works Maintenance Employee Bruce Wetzbrock, a vacancy exists in the department, we're recommending that staff meet with Personnel Committee to discuss any potential changes to that position prior to advertising to fill it, so I'd like to get that meeting to happen with the personnel prior to the next Council meeting, at which time we would officially advertise for that position.
General consent, that's okay?
Yep.
Okay. New business, Sock Lake invasive species projects?
So the budget for the 2023 Sock Lake invasive, I apologize, I'm having residual dental work, speech impairment, I think, the budget for the 2023 Sock Lake invasive species project has been presented, the Curly Leaf Pondweed budget for 2023 is 45 acres of spraying for $27,000, although the DNR has the ultimate say in the number of acres permitted, actually in 2022, they did not permit any spraying, so, you know, some years we'll see that happen. In addition, the budget includes $5,000 for the weed survey, survey to be conducted in the spring of 2023 for the 2024 budget, the Carp Control Project budget for... Uh, the carp control project budget, uh, from March of twenty-three to December of twenty-four is thirty-four thousand one seventy-nine. Uh, they do have in-kind contributions at fifteen thousand five ninety-three. So that Sock Lake, uh, Association is doing a lot of work in-kind for that project. Uh, and then also they did submit a grant application of a hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and eighteen and they have a good chance of getting that. So they can continue to work on the carp and trying to diagnose where they're coming from and, and what we can do to help with that species. So really what we need to do is just acknowledge the budget proposal for twenty-twenty-three. And I do have two full pamphlets of documentation and information. I'll be scanning that, so I'll be able to send it out to you email. Or you can stop in and look at it at any time.
Questions?
I think a lot of those carp are being bussed up here from Melrose. I think we should bust them back. I'll make a motion to approve.
Here we have a motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Consent agenda, we have, uh, scheduled claims of four hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and six cents for a total of the same. Um, August checks paid claims payroll, two million seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Is there any questions about the consent calendar? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items.
Couple informational items tonight. Uh, Police Officer Grant Stoll is scheduled to advance to step three of the pay school, scale according to the union contract. So that's an automatic advancement. Uh, we do have the public hearing at the next council meeting on October fifth for the twenty-twenty-two street project that Heidi had asked about. And also a public hearing at that same date for the twenty-twenty-two delinquent accounts. And that's things like snow removal, lawn mowing and that type of thing that we do output on the taxes. The closing on the sale of Lot One, Block Four of the South Sock, South Sock Center Industrial Park has been completed. Warren and I were down last week and, and took care of that. Uh, in addition to that, the closing for the Ballfield property acquisitions is happening on October fourth, so that's coming up next Tuesday. And then also I have in your packets some spectrum lineup changes. And that is all I have.
Questions?
J- with the twenty-twenty-two street project, uh, changes or prices or something, will that, is something becoming that we can see those as well? Or, because like Heidi was asking about.
I guess I missed the call for public hearing. I.
We did it when you weren't here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I read the meeting note, or I, I read the minutes, but I missed that one. I apologize.
So what is it that you want to see?
I just didn't know if we, we would see in, uh, any type of, uh, update with any changes of the numbers or anything like that, or is that not something that?
So, yeah, and I can give you the individual ones as well. I think what you were talking about, we, we originally had the hearing and we had the project. And then, um, the assessment hearing, and then we went out for bid.
Mm-hmm.
And then the bids came back high and so we cut a bunch of property out of the project. So because the costs went up, well, then at that point, then you approve moving forward with those higher costs on the remaining properties. And then at that meeting, there was, um, in the report, I think he called it option two or something in the report. It showed the new average assessments in that report. And I can forward those on to you, so you can review all of that before the meeting.
Right.
To see how we got to where we are now. Uh, and then we did send out and we called a new public hearing for the final assessments because there were changes and there were actually some properties added to it. Because they had to extend a little bit on Second Street. And, uh, then, uh, with those added and the changes, we wanted to do the new public hearing on the final assessment. And so that'll give a chance for everybody to come and speak, uh, one more time about it.
Okay.
And so I'll get you the information ahead of the meeting, so you have everything. They'll give a presentation at the meeting. And then, uh, the public will have a chance then to speak at the same time.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, there's nothing on the informational items. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sheldon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.